Good afternoon. The first presentation for the board is an overview of school accountability and accreditation. I would note that while we're going to see some highlights related to our academic performance to include standard of learning or SOL data, as well as some other academic data points, the state has yet to release the accountability rankings for schools. So we'll certainly take a look at the new accountability framework as it stands, but we don't have ratings specific to our school division, nor do other divisions across the state, so we'll provide that once it's available. But again, we'll look at some data points, we'll take a look at that accreditation framework, and really talk about the school quality process and how that guides us, and has been guiding us in our efforts to ensure we're meeting the needs of the students in all of our schools. So Dr. Hinton and Dr. Grant are going to begin the presentation. We're joined by a number of other staff who will both present and be here to answer questions. You may begin.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Cashwell. This afternoon, staff will provide an update on the Virginia Department of Education's new school performance and support framework. HCPS is an academic area of focus and trends in student outcomes in HCPS, and information about school quality process used by schools to use data to inform instruction and improvement. At this time, I would turn the podium over to Dr. Tiffany Hinton, Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation, to provide an overview of the state's new accountability framework.
Thank you, Dr. Grant. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Our strategic plan, Journey to 2030, outlines our shared commitment to academic achievement. In our work, we define academic achievement comprehensively, looking beyond a single metric. Our goal ensures all students demonstrate content mastery, we work on cultivating the six Cs outlined in our Henrico learner profile, and preparing students for success in college, the workforce, or military service. The Virginia School Performance and Support Framework provides a set of state-defined metrics that align with these priorities. It will serve as an external measure that complements our own internal data and helps us identify areas where we can provide more targeted support to our schools. The new framework is a significant change to how our schools are evaluated. Accountability and accreditation ratings haven't been released publicly yet, because as you might expect with a new system, data and ratings are being looked at closely to ensure that it is being accurately represented in the framework, but that information will be shared once made available. I will start with an overview of the previous state accreditation ratings, which resulted in each school being given one of three performance levels: accredited, accredited with conditions, or accreditation denied. These determinations were based on multiple indicators, including academic achievement and chronic absenteeism for all schools, along with college career and civic readiness, graduation, and dropout rates for our high schools. A primary goal in the creation of the new framework was to separate school accountability from accreditation. The previous system blended academic performance with operational compliance, which often made it difficult for stakeholders to get a clear picture of a school's strengths and weaknesses. The new framework's purpose is to provide a comprehensive and transparent view of a school's performance by separating these two systems. The framework now uses three distinct components to assess schools: accountability, which focuses on student learning outcomes and performance; federal identification, which addresses federal reporting requirements and student group performance; and accreditation, which is based on the Division's submission of the Standards of Accreditation Compliance Report and focuses on meeting professional standards of practice. Let's dive deeper into the performance categories. Schools will earn points for each component, and the total scores fall into four performance categories. A school that earns 90 points or above is considered distinguished, meaning it's exceeding state expectations and serving as a model for others. A score between 80 and 89 points puts a school in the "on-track" category, meaning it's meeting state expectations. If a school scores between 65 and 79 points, it is categorized as off-track and will receive additional support from the VDOE. Finally, a score below 65 points means the school is in the needs-intensive support category and will receive more comprehensive support from the state. One important detail to note is that if a school is also identified for federal support with either a targeted or comprehensive support and improvement designation, its performance category will be lowered by one level. The overall framework score is based on several components, and these vary by school level. The components for elementary and middle schools are mastery, growth, and readiness. For high schools, mastery and readiness are included, and there's also a graduation component. The weighting of these components shifts to reflect the different priorities and student pathways at each level. For example, at the elementary level, mastery accounts for the majority of the score at 65%, while growth is 25% and readiness is 10%. The weighting changes for middle schools, where mastery is 60%, growth is 20%, and readiness is also 20%. At the high school level, mastery is weighted at 50%, readiness is 35%, and graduation accounts for the remaining 15% of the score. This table breaks down the specific indicators within each component for elementary, middle, and high schools. A guiding principle in the creation of the new framework was to develop a system that prioritized every student achieving proficiency, which is evident in the higher weight given to reading and math mastery across all levels. Mastery includes a student's performance on SOL and VAP tests, in reading, math, and science, and schools earn more points as students achieve higher proficiency levels. English learner progress is also included in mastery, and it's measured by two consecutive scores on the WEATA Access Test. The growth indicator measures how close students get to meeting or exceeding their individual expected achievement scores in reading and math on SOL and VAP tests. To determine these scores, the VDOE partnered with SAS, an analytic software company, to model a student's individual expected growth based on their past testing history and the state's rate of progress. For the readiness component, chronic absenteeism remains a key indicator for all levels. For middle schools, advanced math coursework is also included. This indicator measures the SOL pass rate for middle school students enrolled in high school-level math courses, and also considers any grade eight student who scored past advanced on the grade seven math test the prior year. This ensures that we are actively providing challenging coursework for our highest-performing math students. For high schools, the 3E readiness framework is included, which comprehensively measures preparedness for college, careers, or military service. Enrollment measures a student's readiness for higher education through achievements like earning college-level credit on AP and IP exams. Employment measures preparedness for the workforce, with points awarded for earning an industry-recognized credential in a high-demand field and completing a high-quality work-based learning experience. Enlistment measures readiness for military service, with points awarded for passing the ASVAB test. Readiness for high schools also includes the six-year graduation rate with applied studies, which recognizes that not all students graduate in four years, and some may pursue an applied studies diploma. Finally, the graduation component is specific to high schools and is based on the four-year federal graduation indicator, which includes both advanced and standard diplomas. In addition to the performance categories, schools may also be identified for federal support based on their performance as a whole or for specific student groups. These federal identifications fall into three main categories. First, a school may be identified for comprehensive support and improvement, or CSI. This applies to the lowest-performing 5% of Title I schools across the state, high schools with a graduation rate lower than 67%, or any Title I school that has been identified as ATSI and has not exited after three consecutive years. CSI schools are identified every three years. Second, a school may be identified for targeted support and improvement, or TSI. This happens when one or more student groups within a school are performing lower than the highest-performing CSI school. TSI schools are identified annually. Finally, we have the additional targeted support and improvement, or ATSI, designation. This applies to schools that were identified as a TSI school the previous year and still have at least one student group scoring lower than the highest-performing CSI school. ATSI schools are identified every three years, so new schools will be identified again in the fall of 2028. At this time, I'll pass the presentation over to Taylor Snow to share additional context by school level and areas of focus.
Thank you. The next few slides will provide an overview of the students we serve and how the manner in which we serve them has evolved. One important trend is the continued growth in the number of students receiving special education services and English language services. As our student population becomes more diverse in language and learning needs, we are adapting instruction and supports accordingly. These students are mastering the same essential content, and in some cases, may require additional time or different pathways to demonstrate proficiency that are typically assumed in the state accreditation system. Elementary student membership has increased by 3.7% from the 2021 school year to the 2425 school year. This chart only illustrates the trends in certain student groups. As you can see, the number of students identified to receive special education services has increased by 21%, and students receiving English learner services has increased by 66%. Again, this is at the elementary level. Middle school student membership has decreased 3.7% over the same time period, that's 2021 to 2425. The number of students identified to receive special education services has decreased slightly during the same timeframe by 2.3%, and students receiving ESL services, on the other hand, has increased by 89.9%. High school membership has increased less than 1% from school year 2020, 2021, to 2425, and students identified to receive special education services has increased slightly during the same timeframe by 1%. It is important to note that students receiving ESL services in high school has increased by 106% during the same timeframe. Now that you've seen who we serve, we want to show how recent state policy and testing changes shaped the work happening in our schools. Across Virginia, math and reading standards changed last year at the same time. Henrico, like other divisions, had to put these new standards in place while also rolling out the new reading curriculum required by the Virginia Literacy Act. When standards change, there's always a learning curve for teachers and students, and it's common to see a small dip in scores the first year before they rise again as everyone adjusts. Our division provides job-embedded professional learning and support so teachers can navigate these shifts in stride. As I noted, for the first time since the inception of the Virginia Standards of Learning last school year, the state launched both new math and reading standards at the same time without a crosswalk year, as had been previously provided. Like many other districts across the state, Henrico balanced the implementation of these new standards alongside new aligned curriculum required under the Virginia Literacy Act. The state also changed the eligibility rules for the Virginia Alternative Assessment Program, or VAP, which is used for some students with disabilities. Fewer students now qualify for VAP, meaning many students who previously took an alternative assessment instead of the SOL are now in general education classrooms taking the regular Standards of Learning tests for the first time. In addition, the state is moving toward a single accountability system that meets both state and federal requirements. One example: Under the old rules, English learner test scores could be excluded from school ratings for up to 11 semesters if the student was new to Virginia schools. Under the new rules, that window is now fewer than three semesters, meaning EL scores will count much sooner and may affect school rating results. Finally, the Virginia Literacy Act has led to major statewide changes to how reading is taught to align with the science of reading. HCPS was incorporating the science of reading in our instruction well before the law, but this has accelerated that approach. HCPS has adopted new reading materials, added literacy training for teachers, hired more reading specialists, and created individualized plans for students at risk. The Related Statewide Literacy Screener, or VOWs, once used only in grades pre-K through three, is now used in grades pre-K through eight to identify students who may need early reading support. It is important for the board and the public to understand these policy changes because they significantly affect classroom instruction, student performance data, and how schools are evaluated. The next section of our presentation will provide a high-level overview of our elementary and secondary instructional priorities and student outcomes in reading, math, and science. We'll begin our discussion of our instructional focus areas and student outcomes by discussing our focal points around what we believe is the most durable skill: literacy. At the elementary level, the curriculum has been aligned to meet the new state standards and also the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act. Professional learning, both job-embedded and teacher choice, are carefully planned and provided to ensure teachers and administrators have the skills and knowledge necessary to meet students' needs. As the board heard earlier in the presentation, more targeted supports are necessary to meet the growing educational needs of our student population. An elementary, digital resources for special education students, ESL students, and newcomers complement instruction to ensure students have access to resources on the appropriate level of rigor and content knowledge. With the support of the board, in recent years, we have added additional reading specialists, ESL teachers, and exceptional ed instructional assistants to assist in modeling and meeting the needs of students while also collaborating with classroom teachers. In middle school, the focus is much the same. Curriculum has been updated to align with the new state standards, and a new literacy foundation intervention course has been added to all middle schools. Quarterly performance tasks have been designed to balance reading assessment and ensure that students are being asked to write in response to their reading. Additionally, we are happy to announce that our middle schools have just completed the first administration at that level of the VOWs assessment. This has created invaluable data on the underlying components of student reading ability that we're already acting upon by building student reading plans to map out interventions for our students with reading needs. To ensure that our faculty has the support that they need to implement these initiatives with fidelity, we have leveraged multiple approaches for ongoing professional learning via monthly secondary instructional leader meetings with our content specialists, the leveraging of division literacy coaches to provide support at our schools with the most significant needs, and the development of the HCPS Content Literacy Toolkit to provide turnkey strategies to support student reading and writing across all content areas. With the implementation of the VLA, reading specialists were added to all middle schools. In addition, division coaches assist with schools as well. You'll see many of the same approaches across our high schools. Curriculum has been updated to align with the new state standards, and approaches for integrated reading and writing are reflected across the high school curriculum and our plan for balanced assessment. Additionally, four newcomer sites have been added to high schools to assist with our English learners that enroll in high school and are still acquiring the English language: Tucker, Hermitage, Freeman, and Highland Springs. These programs are designed to meet the specific needs of our high school-age students new to the U.S. with limited literacy and/or English skills. The programs provide English courses, counseling support, and access to A-Center programming. Now, let's take a moment to examine some student outcomes for reading. Overall, the HCPS SOL pass rates in reading increased by 1% and the state average increased by 1%. As a reminder, that is just pass rates, that does not include growth that's factored into the accountability system. While elementary SOL pass rates remain relatively flat with 1% to 2% fluctuations despite rapid demographic shifts, we're seeing gains in early literacy through other assessments. For example, when looking at the IREDDI Diagnostic Assessment, the number of students reading significantly below grade level is shrinking across multiple elementary grades, and our work with at-risk kindergartners is outperforming the statewide trend line on the VOWs screener. At the same time, our secondary results show good momentum. With pass rates improving across all middle school grades, these gains are notable as they reflect the progress being made by students who were in elementary school during COVID, which impacted their literacy foundations. These overall gains are being mirrored or exceeded by notable progress for specific student groups. This performance signals that our instructional focus areas are yielding results, and we need to maintain this focus to accelerate these trends further. The K-12 Math Instructional Focus follows much the same path as ELA. Elementary curriculum has been aligned to the new standards, while math intervention resources were embedded to support students needing additional numeracy support. Multiple professional learning opportunities for classroom teachers have occurred and continue to ensure teachers have the necessary knowledge to utilize data to drive instruction. Targeted supports for all learners have been carefully curated. Supports for English learners and students identified to receive special education services assist teachers in meeting individual needs. Teacher-leader ambassadors and division coaches collaborate with schools to assist in instructional design and delivery. Additionally, secondary professional learning continues at monthly departmental meetings with department leaders, math administrators, and division coaches at the middle school level, and in-depth quarterly half-day workshops at the high school level. Coaching supported at our schools with the most significant needs ensures that this professional learning is supported in practice. While targeted student supports include a new multisensory math course for exceptional learners in middle school, and updated secondary math course pathways to create more access for students, and diversified options in calculus, statistics, and data science. In math, we're seeing a mix of stability and growth across tests. In the last three years, overall HCPS math SOL pass rates remain constant, and the state average has increased by 3%. At the elementary level, math SOL pass rates held consistent in grades three and four, with a positive 3% gain in grade five. We are seeing some evidence that supports are working, particularly for Black students and English learners. Secondary results reflect similar patterns. We saw progress in grades six, seven, and geometry, and a slight decline in grade eight. Most significant progress is seen within student groups, particularly for grade seven math and geometry. These results confirm that our instructional approaches are proving effective, but they also underscore that our priority must remain on ensuring high academic achievement for all students. In science, elementary curriculum has been updated to ensure hands-on experiences and increase student discourse. This work is supported at the school level by the newly-created teacher-leader ambassador position. This is a stipend-based role that allows for each elementary school to identify a teacher to work directly with our content specialists and division science coaches to ensure ongoing professional learning for science best practices makes its way from the division level to the classroom. At the secondary level, curriculum updates to better reflect the comprehensive eighth-grade science SOL test have provided a more connected learning experience for students and exists on a continuum for sixth through eighth grade while setting students up for success as they move into high school credit-bearing courses. These updates include the creation of core labs for each quarter that ensure hands-on learning experiences for all students, but also support the acquisition of content knowledge while teaching our students to be scientists. Focused professional learning occurs at both levels, and again, is targeted to meet teachers where they are and ensure capacity with standards and policy changes. At the middle school level, a division science coach works with our schools that have the most significant needs, and similar support is provided at the high school level via a paid consultant. Finally, it's important to highlight that a focus on explicit vocabulary instruction rooted in exceptional ed best practices has been delivered, and its impact has been evident during school site visits across the first quarter of this year. In the last three years, overall HCPS science SOL pass rates increased by 3% and are now aligned to the state average. And finally, in science, student outcomes are demonstrating consistent and encouraging improvement across multiple levels. At the elementary level, we saw a modest 1% overall gain in grade five science SOL pass rates, with student group performance generally tracking with that division trend. The most significant gains are evident at the secondary level, where we saw improvements in grade eight, earth science, biology, and chemistry. This positive trajectory is being driven by progress among student groups in our high school-level courses, which confirm that our efforts in the secondary science curriculum are having a positive impact. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Director of School Quality, Emery Sealy.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Taylor. Of course, continuous improvement is our goal for all students and schools. Today, I'm here to share with you how Henrico County Public Schools uses the comprehensive school improvement process to help schools build a manageable, research-based plan to meet their improvement goals. The HCPS School Quality Team continues to use the Virginia Continuous Improvement Process to guide schools through the School Needs Assessment and Support Plan processes. These processes are rooted in improvement science and the best practices of planning for change. The School Quality Team began training school and division leaders in improvement science in 2023. In February of 2024, the VDOE Department of School Quality released the Virginia Support Framework as the new structure for school support plans. This approach asks schools to consider how areas such as staffing and professional learning, along with school climate, support their academic goals. When done efficiently, it aligns the systems and processes necessary to accomplish change. The School Quality approach is built around five key supports: the Focus Needs Assessment, development of the school support plan, coaching in one-to-one meetings, quarterly site visits, and compliance management. The Focus Needs Assessment serves as the foundation for each school's improvement journey. Our team collaborates with principals and leadership teams to review performance data, stakeholder feedback, and instructional practices. The goal is to pinpoint a small number of high-leverage priorities, the areas that will make the greatest difference in student outcomes, and directly connect to the new accreditation indicators. This process began in July and is ongoing as we receive updated data from the state as well as from the schools. Once those priorities are identified, schools develop a school support plan. This plan translates the needs assessment into specific measurable actions with timelines, success metrics, and aligned professional learning. The School Quality Team works collaboratively with the school team on each plan to ensure it's both strategic and actionable, and that it aligns with division and state accountability expectations. Each month, we hold meeting, one-to-one meetings with school teams. These sessions give instructional leaders dedicated time to reflect on progress, review data, and troubleshoot barriers. They also allow our team to provide targeted coaching and technical assistance that's personalized to each school's context. In addition, our team partners with Division of Learning and the school-level directors to conduct site visits. These are on-the-ground opportunities to observe instruction, meet with staff, and review evidence of improvement. Each visit concludes with a debrief and action step summary, so schools have clear next steps tied directly to accountability standards and continuous improvement goals. The site visit concludes with the quarterly school quality meeting. Finally, our team supports schools with technical compliance, ensuring that all documentation, reporting, and required submissions are accurate, timely, and aligned with state and federal accountability guidelines. This includes monitoring timelines, maintaining clear communication with both schools and the state, and managing all aspects of the school improvement grant funding process. By managing these technical elements, the School Quality Team allows school leaders to stay focused on instructional improvement while maintaining full compliance with accountability requirements. The School Quality Team's role is to guide, support, and empower schools through a cohesive process that connects needs, plans, actions, and compliance in alignment with the state's new model. Through these supports, we're helping schools not merely meet requirements, but more importantly, build sustainable systems for continuous improvement. Today, we've had the opportunity to share with you an overview of the new accountability framework, as well as the supports already in place from the departments directly supporting schools. As more data become available, we will continue to analyze trends in order to hone those supports. We will also share additional data and accountability ratings with you as they become available. At this time, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
And, members of the board, if I might, before we move on to questions, just offer a few summarizing statements, because I know you heard a whole lot of information today. We have an incredible team of professionals across Henrico County Public Schools who work so hard each and every day to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the staff in our schools who are directly working with students and have a strong understanding of where they are academically and what we can do to best serve them. So, all that said, I hope a few things perhaps stood out in this presentation today. One is that there are tremendous bright spots when we look at our academic achievement, when we look at overall SOL performance by content area in reading, in math, and science. You can see, we're holding steady and growing. When you begin to unpack that, by grade level and by content area, you can see even stronger areas of growth and some areas of challenge, too. When you look beyond the SOL at early literacy, you see us even exceeding the state with those early learners and those reading interventions. So certainly some bright spots there. You also saw the new accountability framework, which will now be applied to these SOL results along with other data pieces. And I just want to note that while it was shared here in the presentation, I want to make sure it's not lost. It is an entirely different framework that will be applied than the previous accreditation framework. So while we're going to see that as a school system, we've made steady progress and even some gains, when you unpack that by school level, you may see a school who has performed equally as well, or perhaps even moved the needle, that may have been fully accredited on the other lens or system that was applied with the new lens of accountability applied may find themselves in an off-track category, and that may be really puzzling. And so I just want to open the conversation here that while we don't have that data available, we expect to get it soon, and we want to make sure we're not doing apples-to-apples comparison with the previous framework because it's an entirely different lens. So we want to first take a look at how's the school performing overall, unpack that by grade level. We have those data points. There are many bright spots there and lots to celebrate in our schools. As usual, we're drilling down by content, by grade level, by student, and making sure we're meeting their needs. Our school quality plans are aligned to helping them grow, but the new accountability system is a much different lens than we've used at all as a state and certainly as a system to look at the way schools are performing and analyze that. So I just want to caution us as we go ahead in the coming weeks and that data's released that we recognize it's a new lens and an entirely different one, and it provides us a different look at how schools are performing along with their SOL performance. And we saw the number of indicators they are, and that varies elementary, middle to high. And I know that our schools will be equipped, as well as members of our team, to help answer questions for our families and our staff as they're unpacking that data and these new ratings for the very first time and helping them make sense of that. So certainly wanted to underscore that while we don't have that data available, wanted to sort of preview how that goes hand-in-hand with what had been used previously. And lastly, I hope it was incredibly evident that despite significant changes in the students we serve in relation to exceptional education, English language learning, new standards in at least two content areas, new Virginia Literacy Act requirements, all things that can really cause systems to have a dip, we had steady growth and even grew in many areas, and we saw that in English, math, and science. So I want to take a moment to celebrate our incredible educators, students, and of course, our staff and families who've wrapped around our students to help them succeed. So we're happy to answer questions on a lot of information that we shared and would offer that.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. Ms. Atkins, I'll start to the left with you.
So thank you so much for the presentation again. Just want to note again that the Virginia Department of Education has not yet released the final reports, so we don't have the complete picture of how schools will be rated. And just want to be very clear, but once the results are available, I'm confident that our division is fully prepared to analyze them thoroughly. And regardless of the outcomes, our division has been and will continue implementing action plans, including targeting reading, math, and science interventions and the supports that align with that. I also want to take a moment to recognize our human resources team. Retainment and recruitment of employees is tough. However, our HR team, led by Ms. Bolden here, really understood that it's more than just filling positions. It's about finding the right people who align with our values, who are committed to student growth, and bring both skill and heart to the classroom. And this intentional focus strengthens the quality of education. It impacts everything from daily learning to the SOL results as well. And so quality educators truly make a difference, and I'm very grateful, Ms. Bolden, to you and your team for helping us give our students quality education. We still have work to do, but we certainly have come a very long way, so thank you. So I want to talk about SOLs just a bit. So while SOLs provide one measure of achievement, I believe that over-reliance on high-stakes testing can actually narrow curriculum. It can sometimes increase stress. It also can limit creativity and critical thinking, and this is from my perspective. This is Alicia's perspective, and unfortunately, I also believe that this emphasis has shaped instruction to focus on pacing and teaching to the test rather than meeting the diverse needs of all learners. And I also believe that true educational quality comes from skilled, passionate educators who inspire curiosity, nurture growth, and meet students where they are, because learning is not just a test score. It's developing potential that lasts a lifetime. So for me, SOLs is just one piece of a very big puzzle that comes together with the student, the staff, families, and school communities that support them. So with that in mind, I really do have some questions. I want to know, how do we feel and how have we planned for these new measurements to impact teacher evaluations and workload?
I guess I'll take that question. We do, in the last two or three years, we have revamped our evaluation system, so it's very targeted, where teachers have specific measures that they set at the beginning of the year with their principals, and depending upon if they're on cycle or off cycle. And we work collaboratively with our specialists in developing what those measures are and the focus areas for the teachers.
I might add, if I may, just for a point of clarity, and that's absolutely correct, that there isn't a direct impact or correlation between SOL accreditation and specific teacher evaluations. One component of the teacher evaluation in Virginia is a student growth component, but there are lots of growth measures that can be used outside of SOL, specific student scores for students who may be served in that classroom or by that teacher. And depending on content area, that varies because, you know, the SOLs are only given in three, five, eight certain courses after that, and only in certain content areas. So all of our teachers have access to various points they can use for growth measures for students. And as far as teacher workload, I mean, I think that's a great question. Certainly, some of the recent policy changes related to SOL, but not necessarily overall accountability ratings impacting a teacher's daily life, new standards were adopted in English and math. That's a lot of work on a teacher, right? So you have a new set of standards you're teaching to, and students are going to be assessed on. So, you know, certainly the change in our curriculum that's in play in English Language Arts with benchmark being added as part of the Virginia Literacy Act. I mean, I think all of those things do impact teacher workload and, you know, pointed to that here, not to say that that's a reason we might not do well. We did incredibly well considering those factors, but do acknowledge that that's extra effort on our educators, our leaders supporting them. And so certainly, those types of things related to this topic do impact teacher workload.
I appreciate the response. I would like to learn more about what a plan looks like. You know, so certainly not at this time, but at some point, what does the plan look like so that we help our educators manage? This is a lot of new, and we're still working on old.
Yes, and I think, you know, I would add to that, the School Quality Plan, I think, is what you're speaking to. So depending on what designation a school might have, or if they're, and we didn't speak as much about this in the presentation, but it was noted that there are federal monitoring indicators. So depending on which indicators may apply to your school, there may be different data points you're having to monitor and report on. That would look different school to school depending on what that dataset is. And, you know, we certainly endeavor to wrap our arms around schools engaged in this process and assist them through that and support them through that, but wouldn't want to insinuate that isn't added work or different work for each school to do. We acknowledge that, so.
Thank you for that. My next question is, how do the measures? Let me rephrase it. How do these accountability measures consider diverse learning needs?
So if it's the accountability ratings, the way the accountability ratings, which again, we don't have and are different than the previous accredited, accredited with conditions or denied accreditation, those ratings are made up of different components or different calculation for elementary, middle, and high to determine a school's overall rating. And so, for example, at the high school level, there's consideration for the three E's, so enrolled, enlisted, employed, advanced coursework, graduation rates, along with overall performance in the core academic areas. And there is a specific indicator or factor related to English language learner performance. So I think that may speak to the diverse learner piece, but, you know, certainly, while there are lots of components considered here, including growth, I think that's one of the challenges our educators face is making sure that students who have diverse learning needs or learn differently, who may not perform well in the SOL framework, while there's some accounting for things like absenteeism and, like I said, advanced coursework and career readiness, it may not be apparent from a school's overall rating how those diverse learners are doing.
So I'm going to summarize it with, we don't know.
Well, you know, I think it's not, it's not the best, this particular rating wouldn't give the best picture of how our diverse learners are doing. It's a picture. It's one picture, but certainly may not be the best one depending on the learner.
I'll move to the next question. If you could share what type of support will be provided from the VDOE for schools labeled as off-track or needs intensive support?
We have not been given any information at this time related to support frameworks or what requirements would be for that matter related to how you might be designated. So we'll stay tuned for that.
So we don't know what we don't know. I'm going to sum that one up as well, and I will yield the floor back to Mrs. Shea.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella.
Thank you so much, Chair Shea. Thank you for this report, and I think my first question is specifically to Dr. Cashwell because I would like to hear her say it on the record that I'm sure I will hear when I'm out and about, why did we not specifically go deeper into schools today as far as SOL scores? Which schools this on scores, which schools that on scores? And I think you've said it, but I'd like for you to repeat that the team is, has unpacked all of their scores at the schools, that this presentation today is a higher level, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. So as SOL scores become available, those score reports down to individual student reports are made available, families, to schools, to teachers. Overall school performance is something that we began looking at as soon as we get it. Our School Quality Team and our other leaders are helping our schools shape plans as the school year is underway to make sure that they're adjusting supports if they're needing, that they're adding supports, that there's something, a different approach that's needed, that we're really looking student by student, content level by content level, and school by school. And so, you know, we're sharing information now because this would have been the time we expected to get the overall accountability ratings to go to couple with that, but we didn't want to delay in talking about our overall SOL performance and what we expect will be coming with the accountability measures because this is something our schools have been actively engaged on since, really, before the first day of school. So yes, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, and I appreciate it because the teams are always looking at the data, no matter what data it is. Just because it's not presented and highlighted on a more granular level today does not mean that the work is not being done or that the board is not aware. So I just wanted to tee that up, like we're well aware of a lot of the SOL results at different schools in our districts. So we've implemented, the School Quality Teams, the Intervention Teams, provided additional resources, which I really appreciate the highlight in the presentation because we really have been ahead in providing resources, whether it's our special education or our increase, dramatic increase in English learner enrollment. And then we've also partnered with tutoring services, I believe. My specific question is, are our intervention teams fully staffed at all of our schools?
We can certainly take a look if we don't have that on hand. I know staffing has been a bright spot this year, and I appreciate Mrs. Atkins' shout-out to our HR team and our school leaders. So I know our schools were in really good shape starting out the school year, but we can get you an up-to-date tally on that.
Specifically, intervention teams, whether it's push-in or push-out, I know some educators have reached out specifically to want to know more about that. So I'd appreciate follow-up there. Research shows that additional supports, right, whether they're mental health, family engagement, community partnerships, make a difference in the academic outcomes. Are we measuring the impact, if you will, of the additional supports here? I mean, I know it's not captured, and the state certainly isn't measuring it, but are we? Because we certainly do a lot.
I would say anecdotally we are. It might be hard to parse out if one factor's driving success or another, but that's certainly something we can work on with our DARE team. But I would say that, you know, you might see some of the things you saw on the slides with, you know, significant increases, almost doubling or in some case tripling ELL populations, a number of ex-ed students being identified at the elementary level, new rules for how soon your scores count when you're a newcomer, you know, three semesters versus 11, new standards, and those kinds of things, as reasons we might have seen some dips where we really didn't. And so, you know, perhaps we do attribute that to their really strong wraparound supports and, you know, certainly want to applaud the board as our presenters did for being, you know, really proactive in this at the last few budget cycles. The intentionality of this board to make sure that reading, additional reading specialists, additional ELL teachers, those support positions are in place so that our teams are well-equipped to have a well-rounded support system for students, you know, is likely a reason we're tracking study.
And then on slide 16, I mean, I still can't get over how much and how well our division has implemented all of these changes. I mean, standards with the math and English, I think it's where it goes. Yeah, all the new things. I mean, I'm just going to say it again. New standards, math and English, the VAP standards, changes to the, you know, semesters for English learners, the Virginia Literacy Act. I mean, all that on top of trying to still improve what the pandemic, you know, the outcomes, you know, we're still struggling with in some cases from the pandemic with our learners. So we really are fortunate to be in Henrico where we have been ahead in providing supports. And my next question is with the, you know, there are more changes coming, like we still don't know how we're going to come out with our rankings, but with the Board of Education's plans to raise the cut scores on SOLs, starting in '26, right, next year?
I'm not sure they've adopted an implementation timeline, but that has been discussed as a potential implementation. We know the new cut score is not the timeline at this point.
So with that being said, do we have a plan for that and what that looks like? Because, you know, of course, we're entering budget season, so are we making lists, you know, as to how to support our students and our staff on this?
I mean, certainly, you know, one of the things I've been impressed with, with our team supporting our schools, is their ability to stay the course and stay focused on what we know is making an impact. And we began that work a few years ago before the new ranking system was adopted. We began that work, and we're seeing results before the new cut scores were adopted. So I think for us, it's staying the course, staying tuned into our schools and our students, and making sure we're adjusting to needs. our students and, and making sure we're adjusting to needs there and not letting maybe perhaps those score ranges and frameworks dictate how we know we can do business with kids to make a difference. But at the same time, you know, we're not, you know, blind to the fact that it may bring some changes, right? So if we have, you know, students who this year have passed the test, but next year the bar is different and we have more students not passing, you know, what will the implications be? For example, for high schoolers who are looking at end of course tests to graduate on time, what will the implications be for remediation and tutoring requirements and how will we be staffed appropriately for that? So, I mean, certainly I think our core plan is solid and one we're going to continue to lean into, but we recognize we may have to be adaptable if, if there are some different, you know, changes we'll need to make to make sure we're leaning in to help students graduate on time and get, get remediation in an on time fashion.
And then since you meet regularly and have improved so many of the mechanisms that we receive staff feedback through, how is, how is our staff, how are our teachers and staff doing? For example, with the SOL results, with this impending framework coming, how are they doing?
I would certainly say, I would be remiss if I didn't note there's tension out there. You know, I think our educators are a bit overwhelmed by all of the changes, the, the number of changes. We just spoke about many on the screen here, along with this and the pending cut score changes. So, you know, I think our goal and certainly my goal is to help steady the course for our educators, help them stay focused on what they know regarding teaching, learning, and assessment in the classroom and not let this deter their work or cause any sense of panic. We certainly are committed to helping our students grow. We're going to monitor that and we're going to provide support when they're not. But, you know, I do think it is unnerving for some educators. There is concern at schools, you know, and I, I used this example previously, a school who's seen steady growth and perhaps similar SOL performance to last year, and they may have been noted as accredited, may find themselves in an off track category. That can be unnerving. They're concerned about what stakeholders might think about the school or their performance or the quality of teaching there. So I think, you know, going back to reminding them and as we'll remind our stakeholders that this is one piece of the puzzle, it's a new way of looking at performance and we certainly are going to dig into it. And if there are any implications for change and growth, we're going to take them. But we don't want this to jade our educators and our leaders and our stakeholders in any way about the quality of our schools.
Thank you so much for speaking to our teachers and staff because they are the ones, you know, each and every day with our, with our students. So I appreciate you speaking to that. And then on slide 21, my last question is, I'm noticing the gains in eighth grade and the high school writing assessment. Can anyone speak to that? Because that is impressive.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think it comes from a lot of areas, most particularly, and obviously our English Language Arts teachers are doing a great job. Writing in response to reading is part of what they do every day. Students should be writing in, in those ELA classes, obviously every day, but I think a lot of schools have been really proactive in focusing on the fact that literacy happens everywhere. English Language Arts is a course, but literacy transcends all of our courses. So across science, math, social studies, career and technical education courses, students are reading as readers in that discipline, you know, reading as scientists, reading as historians, and then communicating that understanding and that learning in writing, writing like historians, writing like scientists, writing like technical experts in our CTE courses. So it's, a lot of it is anchored in our English Language Arts courses, but, but it's across the curriculum that, that writing is happening.
I appreciate that, Dr. Snow, because we have focused, the division has focused a lot on cross curricular writing, no matter what class you're in, that writing is important. So it's nice to see that we're now outperforming the state in that category because we really have focused on that. So thank you so much. That's all I have at this point, Chair Shea.
And some nice middle school gains. I can't not highlight those on this slide as well, really strong gains there. Thanks so much, Mr. Young.
Thank you. It's almost difficult to go third after all of my colleagues have sort of asked questions. So if some questions get redundant, it's because I didn't follow my colleagues quite as good as I should. But I will stay on slide 21, and I think I asked this previously, students can fall into more than one student group, correct?
Correct.
And how does that affect when we're looking at percentages? Are we looking at economically disadvantaged, grade six, 3% increase, which is phenomenal? Could students with disabilities also fall into that same framework where we started seeing positives across multiple groups?
Yes.
And does it unintentionally hurt us as well if the opposite happens, if they?
It could, yes.
Okay. So I was, I had that written down because I wanted to learn a little bit more about how our kids can, and students can fall into multiple categories. And sometimes percentages don't quite add up in our favor. And then sometimes in these instances, 3%, 5%, 7%, I mean, it's phenomenal. So I wanted to start there. Can someone speak to, I wasn't on the board then, but a lot of our kindergartens are the children born during COVID. A lot of our fifth graders, because I have one, did kindergarten virtually. Can, can someone speak to how our approach has changed from pre-COVID to post-COVID on, on what we do as a division now?
Well, certainly, maybe not all of this is driven specifically by COVID or the time period we were in a virtual setting, but it was mentioned, the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act and our approach towards the science of reading and really making sure that our literacy approach is one that's backed in science and meets the needs of students. That's a, that's a significant change, kind of coupled with the same return from COVID, you know. But I would say, in listening to our educators and leaders at the elementary level, you know, they noticed that developmentally, students were sort of all over the place for a lot of reasons. And the good news is our early educators are really good at that because on any given year in a kindergarten classroom, you have, you know, the, a broad range, students who have been in a formal preschool setting, those who have not, those have been in a home daycare setting with a few kids versus those who have been a larger setting. And knowing that the comfort level and the ability to adapt for our, our youngest learners can be vastly different. And so maybe some of those lessons were applied all the way across the elementary school setting and understanding how to differentiate. So I, I don't know that I could point to one thing beyond the English Language Arts curriculum and other changes, but being really tuned into more differentiation, more small group in the classroom and really drilling down to the individual student needs. You see a lot of that more often now in classrooms. It's a best practice certainly, but I see that more now than I ever did pre-COVID, that, that attention to individual student performance in small group.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Couple other questions here regarding, how many federally identified schools do we have right now in Henrico?
We, we currently have 20, 12 at the elementary level and eight at the middle school level.
Okay, thank you. And you said 12 at the elementary and?
Eight, eight at the middle school. We do not have any high schools that are federally identified.
Okay. And based on the new accountability framework, wherever they are, because of this, they automatically drop us step?
That is our understanding, their state performance level would drop if they are federally identified.
Has there been any indication why it's so punitive?
They made an effort to align the ESO requirements, which are the federal requirements, to the state performance levels. The state performance levels used to account for student groups and now they don't. And so the only way that we're accounting for student groups is through the federal identification process.
Got you, thank you. Seems to be a little biased and unfair, but it's, the cards we've been dealt and your group has done a phenomenal job addressing those concerns. Can, I don't know what slide it was on, but I wanted to talk about growth and the difference between how it was accounted for before and how it's accounted for now. Can someone, just want to know how it differs now from previous years where growth, especially in my district, mattered the most because we were seeing gaps being closed and now it feels like, you know, things have changed for us.
So under the previous model, what they, what they looked at when they looked at achievement was what they called a combined rate. And that included your students who passed as well as students who failed but showed growth according to progress tables. The difference with this new system is that they're looking at achievement for all students and they're looking at growth for all students. So they've really separated that out to get a clearer picture so it wasn't kind of all jumbled in there together and we couldn't really see what growth looked like for our individual schools.
Thank you for that. And as far as measurement is concerned, how, how does that differ now?
So under the old system, they used what they called progress tables. So they would look to see, how did the student do the year prior? How did they do this year? And then they would use this table to see if they moved up a level. Under the new system, how they've done it this year is they have worked with SAS to do some statistical modeling. So they've taken all the data from all the students across the state and historically looked at how those students have performed. So they're looking at the student's current score, how they have historically performed in comparison to other students like them, as well as the state rate of progress. And then they have identified the expected achievement score of a student based on that statistical modeling.
Got it, thank you. Thank you for explaining it to me. I know that's a, sort of a difficult thing to explain, but, but thank you for that because I know growth has been really important to a lot of my principals, teachers, administrators in my schools. And we have seen growth in all of our Fairfield District schools and just speaking district specific for a little bit. Madam Chair, I don't know if I have anything else, but hold on, hold on, don't hold me to that. Oh, I did want to talk about one thing, the quarterly site visits, the one-on-one school meetings. I want to know how, you know, that's feeding into division level decision-making, particularly around resource allocation and staff development. I, I've been on this for a little while, but I don't think we, I don't, I know we don't take a one size fits all approach, but are we looking at some of our schools, like maybe three reading specialists or more AA's or more coaches? And are we finding that our better coaches are, maybe won't be at the school that the most need is at? So just want to dabble in the net real quick to see if we can have some discussion around.
Sure. So, so we bring the quarterly site visit data to our director teams and we discuss the trends that we're seeing from the site visits and then have a conversation with all the directors regarding the resources. Because one of the things that we're asking at the site visits is how are the resources that you have going? And that could be anything from coaching to supplemental tutoring that's been provided. We're, we're capturing data on all of those things. And then we're talking as a director team, how is it going? Are there schools where we need to provide more support, where we need to refine the support, where more coaching needs to go in? So we are doing that as a director and chief team as the quarterly site visits conclude at the end of each quarter.
Perfect, thank you for that. And Dr. Cashwell, you know, I, I know we get these reports maybe once a year, but if I could ask you or anybody from your team, if I could get some sort of monthly report on how our schools are doing and, and what that looks like and the improvement, that way I can, I can better serve my community as opposed to this once a year presentation that can kind of help throughout the year. Is that possible?
Well, certainly. It wouldn't be SOL data because those are point in time data. But we did say that there are many other data points that we're using to monitor student progress. So we're certainly happy to provide the board with some more frequency, a look at those data points that are being monitored all the while.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Thank you, team. I appreciate it.
Thanks so much. Team, thanks for all the information. I have a couple things. So for me, they kind of fall into two different buckets of both what the framework is and then how we're implementing things from the state. Because let, let's be real, a lot of this that we're talking about, like Mr. Young said, we don't have control, this is the hand that we've been dealt. And so we're trying to figure out how to navigate it in such a way that is best for our students and also sustainable for our staff, right? And so my first kind of big level question, and Ms. Atkins and Dr. Cashwell and some others already hit on it, well, it was going to be, how do we support the classroom teachers with all this? But then you kept going and showed us all the way you're supporting the classroom teachers, but it's a lot. I just, the more that comes down, it's just a, you know, math and English standards changing in the same year without a crosswalk year, you know, how the assessments change, you know, all of these things. Well, we're looking at students coming into the general classroom from self-contained. We're looking at our English learners being counted. I mean, it's just, it's like an avalanche, I feel like, for our classroom and teachers. And I appreciate the investments that have been made in both personal capital to support our teachers and also instructional materials. But, you know, when the rubber meets the road, how is the reception and the buy-in at the teacher level? And what can we do as a board to help support that?
I'll, I'll speak to the buy-in for the school quality process. Our focus over the last three years has been to include the stakeholders who are impacted by the changes. And so each time we meet with the schools, we're asking, where are your teachers? Where are your students? Where are your community members? Because what we don't want to happen is the school to be making decisions about strategies that they're putting in place without the folks at the table who then have to implement those. And we have seen a great increase this year in folks participating in the strategic planning process that we've put in place through school quality. At, at the classroom level, we've had a lot of schools who've had students on their teams this year and parents and other community members so that there is the voice where the impact is the biggest. And those schools who have truly embraced that part of the process, I think they, they're, they're feeling supported around the changes and feeling heard that the strategies put in place are a team decision. They're rooted in best practice, they're rooted in research, the instructional strategies are rooted in the instructional model and the curriculum that's in place. But we are really allowing the schools to have the conversation about what can they manage and then providing the professional learning and the coaching that goes with implementing those changes. That's one way that I think the teacher voice is best heard, is if there's a strategic plan going in place for the school, then those folks should be part of that team.
Excellent. That's excellent to hear. I know myself and, and my other board, we want our teachers to feel supported. We want them, this is hard work. It is sometimes made harder by those outside of Henrico and we want them to feel supported. We want them to have what they need to do their job and do their job well. And we, we want them to know that we're, we're their cheerleader and we're here from them and we appreciate what they do and we're trying to figure out how to help them do that best. So I appreciate that context of having those stakeholders at the table. I think that's really important. Getting a little bit more granular, Dr. Hinton, with the middle school readiness, particularly the math part, could you tell me a little more slowly, I couldn't write so fast, about the advanced coursework in math, how that's being assessed?
So they're looking at students, any student in grade six through eight who is in an end of course math course. And they're looking at, at that student's performance. So that's your numerator. And then your denominator would be any student, grade six through eight, who was in those courses, as well as any student who they say are ready. So ready is being defined as any student who is a current grade eight student who scored past advanced on the grade seven math. So if those students were not enrolled in an end of course math this current year, then they would be considered ready and included in the denominator.
So this is not necessarily directly tied to algebra by eighth grade?
Correct.
Good. I mean, I know that's not our decision, that would be a state level decision, but I have real concern if that's a metric being used to grade our schools when we look at what's developmentally appropriate for all students and in terms of having an appropriate math foundation that's going to set them up for success in high school and beyond. There are some students in eighth grade that algebra is a good fit and there are some that are not. And as a, as a science math educator of, of upper level science, I, I always want to be an advocate for students to, especially in math, especially for algebra, really get the solid foundation before they're pushed on because otherwise we're not setting them up for success. And so I know that's not a you decision, but that just really, that was like a red flag when I looked at that. And so I am, I'm, I'm happy to hear that's not the metric currently being used. I hope the state doesn't, you know, start to push it that way. And I hope if it does, you will let us know and that we can advocate as needed to make sure all of our students have access to the coursework that they need to, to be successful. And I think like that algebra one piece about when it happens and how it happens for students is so pivotal for the rest of their high school, high school path. So appreciate you articulating that, thank you. So appreciate you articulating that, thank you. And then when we were talking a little bit about the federal guidelines and the CIS, TIS, it said compared to the highest, is that the highest in our division, the highest in the state?
The highest performing CSI school in the state.
In the state, okay. All right, that's helpful. And then again, on the science, I'm so glad we've made strides. I know there's been a lot of targeted effort. Is there any hope for better assessments for science? I know, like, for example, the middle school science SOL is cumulative over three years. A lot of those students have not been in our school or maybe even our country for three years. And not only is it cumulative, it focuses a lot on science facts and not really like authentic scientific investigation. Do we have hope for a performance task or something that better reflects scientific thinking?
At the middle school level, that certainly, that would require some legislative action, action by the Virginia Board of Ed. I will say, legislation passed during the last General Assembly session did seem to imply that at the high school level, courses that were, that were end-of-course, high school courses that typically had an end-of-course test but were not included in federal testing requirements. So really, anything besides biology at the high school level would be able to give what's called a permissive local alternative assessment, similar to what we do with world history with the, and Virginia and US history with inquiry design model tasks. We have not heard anything from VDOE about when those may be coming, what those may look like, but it was our interpretation of that legislation that chemistry, potentially earth science, may have those opportunities going forward.
Sounds good.
No updates as of now.
Thank you. And again, my frustration on the science assessment is not with you, Dr. Snow. I know that you did not make it. And then just to end on a high note, I'm really excited about the writing, like, I'm really excited about the writing. I think that when we really look at core literacy competence that is going to project our students onward, writing is such an essential part of that. I know Benchmark has a lot of more, in the elementary school, a lot more intentional writing parts. I was actually, I got to be with a fourth grade class today, Ms. Roberts' class, they presented their persuasive essays to me about Benchmark, about why they want a water bottle filler in their school. And so I was their, like, authentic audience to hear those persuasive essays. As a, as a middle school parent, particularly this year, I have been positively floored by the writing that's been required, particularly with that world history assessment you were talking about, Dr. Snow, and a shout out to Mr. Hinton, really teaching these middle schoolers research-based writing, like, in middle school to prepare for things like DBQs and, I mean, so far beyond what I could have imagined doing, you know, in middle school. And so to see the progress that we as a division has made in writing in the last couple of years, but then to see also these really quality, like, outputs from elementary school and middle school as we're on this journey has been really encouraging. And so, you know, just keep up the great work, team. Like Dr. Cashwell said, there are a lot of bright spots. There's a lot of fuzziness as we are waiting for things from the state, but there's a lot of bright spots of really great learning happening in our classrooms every single day with teachers that are highly skilled professionals and deeply care about their kids. So thank you.
All right. All right, I think that concludes questions. Thank you, members of the board, for your excellent questions and for enduring a very long and detailed presentation. I know that was a lot to cover in a short amount of time.